It is 6:30. We know Jordana is going to be a little late this evening, so is there a motion to call the March 1st, 2022 Board of Education meeting to order?
So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous, Mary, with Jordana just absent.
Yes. Let me see.
Okay.
Okay.
Item two on tonight's agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, item three on tonight's agenda is the superintendent's report. So with that, I will turn this over to Mr. Nichols.
Thanks, Brian. You know, given the events of the last week, I'm reminded how lucky we are to live in the United States. So I think it's appropriate to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence for the people of Ukraine as they fight for the freedoms that we all enjoy. Thank you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the status of things as it relates to COVID and I'll work towards the mask resolution that appears on tonight's board agenda, and I'll try to go through this pretty quickly. On February 25th, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention stated that 70% of Americans no longer had to, in their opinion, wear masks or social distance while inside. With this conclusion, the CDC then adjusted the metrics that they've referenced within a community when determining COVID restrictions. So up until February 25th, the CDC really considered the number of COVID cases in a community. And on the 25th of February, they moved to considering three metrics. One is the new COVID-related hospital admissions over the previous week. Two is the percentage of hospital beds occupied by COVID patients during the previous week. And finally, number three, new COVID cases per 100,000 residents within the community over the previous week. Those three metrics or three measures are used by the CDC to classify a community, a county, if you will, as low, medium, or high risk. A low-risk community with regard to masking, it's a personal preference. A medium-risk community or county, people who are immunocompromised or at high risk of disease or live with someone who's at high risk of disease are supposed to wear a mask. If you're in a high-risk area, you're supposed to wear a mask inside, schools included, regardless of vaccination status. Thankfully, Suffolk County at this time is classified as low-risk. On February 27th, the governor, Governor Hochul, announced that the state mask requirement in schools would end on March 2nd tomorrow. And in making that announcement, she referenced some data to support her decision. And I'll just provide a brief summary of what she said. She noted that within large states in the United States, New York had the highest percentage of fully vaccinated adults. New York had the highest percentage of fully vaccinated teenagers. New York had the second highest percentage of five to 11-year-old fully vaccinated children. She noted that there was a 98% decline in COVID cases since the Omicron peak. She noted that there was a continuous downward case trend for 51 consecutive days. And also noted that pediatric hospitalizations were down 80% from the peak of the Omicron strain. The Suffolk County data, which was published this evening, 3-1, which references February 28th data. And I've talked about this consistently over the last two years. The test positive rate for the 28th was 1.7%. The seven-day average test positive rate was 1.8%. The number of cases per 100,000 residents for February 28th was 4.5%. And the seven-day average for cases per 100,000 residents was 7.5. Those numbers are all very, very low when compared to where we were at the turn of the year, where the test positive rate was just shy of 30%. Given the thoughtful and thorough analysis and consideration on the part of the Centers for Disease Control and New York State, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution that's before you tonight that essentially adjusts our reopening plan, making masks optional inside our school buildings and in our school buses. So that's my recommendation. I think the next consideration is, you know, what's our path forward? I had said, I don't know, about a month ago, that if the governor were to adjust the mask mandate, that I found it highly likely that she would adjust, or the New York State Department of Health and the Suffolk County Department of Health would issue guidance adjusting other mitigation measures that would be impacted by the elimination of the mask mandate. And the reason I said that is that if you eliminate the mask mandate, that could, wouldn't, it's not could, it does impact the reopening guidance that speaks to physical distancing, the definition of a close contact quarantine specifics. Unfortunately, the New York State Department of Health and the Suffolk County Department of Health have not issued that guidance. We were told that it was likely that it would be forthcoming either yesterday or today. I anticipate that that will be forthcoming in the next day or two. And when we receive that guidance, we will adjust additional mitigation measures as needed. And when we make those adjustments, we'll share that information with students, parents, and the school community. The plan for tomorrow is in recognition of the fact that this elimination of the mask mandate is going to impact people differently. And what do I mean by that? There are some students and adults who are very, very happy that the mask mandate has been eliminated. There are other students and adults who may find the elimination of the mask mandate anxiety-provoking. So in preparation for this, tomorrow, the day that the mask mandate, if passed by the Board of Education expires, the elementary school and the middle school, high school will meet with students, faculty, and staff. At the morning, at the elementary school, Mr. Malone will meet with his faculty and staff prior to the start of school and then address the change in the mask requirement during morning program. Ms. Carriero, along with her fellow administrators, will hold grade-level meetings at the middle school, high school. The purpose of those meetings will basically be to say, to talk about the change with regard to the masks and to note that everyone should be respectful of individuals' decision with regard to whether or not they wear a mask. Some people will elect to wear a mask, some people will not, and that we all need to be respectful of choice. Other considerations moving forward, I know that there are going to be questions about, you know, what's going to happen with parent-teacher conferences, what's going to happen with field trips, what's going to happen with visitations to school. All of those issues have been spoken about and are continuing to be addressed by the principals. And as decisions are made, we will share that information with parents and students. Let me give you a concrete, a couple of concrete examples. Today, I approved the robotics trip to upstate New York and Long Island. And I made that decision based on the fact that the COVID numbers are very low. If I was asked to make that decision six weeks ago, I would have said no. But based on the current conditions on the ground and recent developments, I'm more comfortable allowing our students to participate. Capacity restrictions at sporting events, those are going to end tonight. Parent-teacher conferences, I've already spoken to Mr. Malone and Ms. Carriero about their desire, and it makes good sense, to pivot away from a remote-only parent-teacher conference format. What we ultimately do is going to be decided in the next couple of weeks. Let me give you an example. At the high school, for instance, in the past, we would have parent-teacher conferences, everybody in the high school gym. It might not be prudent at this point to switch from remote to that kind of environment, but there's probably a solution in between where perhaps there's a remote option and an in-person option where teachers are spread out throughout the building. Those are the kinds of discussions that are happening. And again, as we make decisions, we will share those with parents. I'm anticipating that some parents this evening are going to want to know, when are visitors allowed in school? Well, that's a deliberation for the principals, and as they make that decision in consultation with me, they will share that with you. But again, I don't think that making that decision tonight in a rushed manner is consistent with the way that we've approached being safe throughout the pandemic. I think the appropriate way to move forward is to wait for the additional guidance from Suffolk County Department of Health and the New York State Department of Health. And if it makes sense, make adjustments that allow us to sort of re-implement pre-pandemic practices in a safe way. And we're committed to doing that, again, in a thoughtful, measured way. And my last comment is just to thank the school community for their patience with the school district. I know that people have passionate views, and many people disagree. Some people agree, many people disagree with how the school district has approached this. But from my perspective, we've been consistent, and our priority has been keeping kids in school and keeping the school community safe. So I want to thank everybody, even those who have disagreed vehemently with some of our decisions, for your patience. And I'm thankful that it looks as though we're in a position to continue to move towards a pre-pandemic environment over the next weeks and months. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jeff. Before we move on to the next section, are there any board questions for Mr. Nichols?
I have a question. First of all, I want to thank the administrators and everyone on the team here. And I echo with your sentiments about the school community and community at large. It's been a trying time. And I think for a long time, we've been waiting to be able to vote on this, to lift the mask mandate. So this is, this is a very positive night in that sense. In terms of procedures, I know that it seems like on a daily basis or every few days, there may be some additional decisions coming down. Can we have a prominent place on the district website where people can log in and just see kind of what the latest is in writing so that there's kind of a go-to place online for them?
Sure, sure. And we'll also plan on sending that information out as we have throughout in communications to parents.
Terrific. Thank you. And then the other question I have is, you know, the COVID rates are very low, but there may be a few times in the near future where a student or a staff does have COVID. Can you just remind us, is the protocol still that they stay home for five days? And then when they return, are they still required to wear, not by us, but by the protocols by the CDC, required to wear a mask for five days afterwards?
That's the existing guidance as it stands now. But as per the comments I made regarding forthcoming guidance from the Suffolk County Department of Health and the New York State Department of Health, that could change. So again, I'm waiting, I'm waiting additional guidance from those two entities, and we'll share that with the community upon receipt.
Thank you. I'm also just want to share, I'm really, I, we've heard from people from both sides. Some were really advocating for the removal of the mask mandate, others are concerned about the removal. And I'm really hopeful that there's a sense of support, regardless of what students and staff do decide to do in the coming days and weeks. Some may choose to still wear masks, others may not. And I hope that it's a welcoming environment by all parties and that, that that if those two, those that do choose to continue to wear masks, and there may be folks that do, that there's not any negative repercussions or pressure they feel and vice versa. I hope that we all support each other in this, you know, in this improved environment.
Thank you, Chris. Any other board members?
Yep, I do have a question. Very happy for tonight's meeting. I do have one question of, I don't know if you can answer this, Jeff, but we do have three nurses. So if a child's in the classroom and doesn't feel well, and the child goes to the nurse's office, will they be required to at least put on a mask until they're evaluated or get home or what have you?
As of now, I don't really have an answer to that, Sandy, but as of now, they would not be required to wear a mask in school at any time.
Okay.
But I'm hoping that, you know, that we get further clarification on that issue from the Suffolk County Department of Health and the New York State Department of Health. I referenced earlier in my presentation tonight that several weeks ago, I said it was highly unlikely that the governor would do away with the mask mandate without adjusting or issuing additional guidance regarding other mitigation measures. And unfortunately, that has not happened. She issued the elimination of the mask mandate without addressing other related or impacted guidance issues. So again, hopefully, in the next day or two, we'll have that. I can't imagine, for instance, and I'm repeating what I said several weeks ago, that she's going to eliminate the mask mandate and leave physical distancing at six feet. I just, I can't imagine that's the case. And we're proceeding as if that's not the case, even though it's in writing in the guidance document issued in the summer of 2021. But if we were to do that, which we're not, which we're not, but if we were to do that and go to six feet, we, without masks, we couldn't get all of our students in the building. But that just makes no sense from my perspective. So again, I think it's highly likely that we will get that document in the next day or two. And Sag Harbor is not alone. All of the superintendents that I've communicated with are also awaiting that same guidance from the Department of Health.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else before we move on to public input? Okay. We'll move on to public input. Prior to opening up public input, I'm going to remind the public in the Board of the rules for public input. The Board of Education encourages public participation in school-related matters at the public meetings. The public input is reserved for comments related to agenda and non-agenda items and does not require sign-up. The period for public input is unrestricted to accommodate as many comments as possible. The Board does have discretion to limit public input if a meeting is going particularly long. Any group or organization wishing to address the Board must identify a single spokesperson. Comments should be as brief as possible. No speaker will be permitted to speak for longer than three minutes during public input number one. If a member of the public wants to address the Board more than once, they will have to wait until all others have had the opportunity to speak. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil and respectful manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats, statements advocating racial, religious, religious or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. The Board will not permit discussion regarding individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss these matters should present their comments or concerns to the appropriate administrators during business hours. If a member of the community fails to conduct themselves appropriately or violates the rules set forth herein, the Board has the right to suspend that community member's privilege of speaking during public input. Persons making comments at the Board meeting will address remarks to the President and may direct questions or comments to Board members or other district officials only upon the approval of the President. Board members and the superintendent shall have the privilege of asking and answering questions of any person who addresses the Board. The President shall be responsible to conduct the orderly meeting and rules as such. And if there is a discussion and the appropriateness of the subject is being presented in question, the President shall have the right to discontinue any public input which violates this policy. And with that, we will move on to public input number one, to speak if you'd like to address the Board. Raise your hand in the chat room, and Mr. Fisher will unmute you. Please state your full name, and then you'll have three minutes to address the Board pursuant to the rules that I just read. Okay, Mr. Fisher, with that, and Ms. Adamcheck, please keep track of time.
Okay.
First hand, Mr. Fisher.
Yeah, we're going to go with Christine McLean. I'm trying to work out the same system we did last time, so bear with me a moment. Oh, I'm sorry. It's Christian. Christian, you should be able to go ahead now.
I'm in.
There you go.
Hi. So you have to state your name, okay, your full name.
Hi, my name is Ilona Clean, and I'm a student at Pearson Middle School. And I was wondering if there are any, like, any, like, if people who are unvaccinated can also not wear masks because it would seem like more risky if someone who was unvaccinated was also maskless.
Thanks for coming this evening. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, the mask, the expiration of the mask mandate from the governor applies to all individuals. So whether or not you're vaccinated or not, you're permitted to choose whether to wear a mask. So tomorrow, regardless of vaccination status, students in the Sag Harbor school can elect to wear a mask or not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher, the next hand, if any.
Okay, bear with me one moment here, please. I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, let me just check the chat room. There being no hands. And no questions in the chat room. We will move on from public input number one to section five of tonight's agenda, which is to modify the district's reopening plan. Is there a motion for the following resolution? I will read the resolution. Whereas the Board of Education adopted the Sag Harbor Schools 2022 District Reopening Plan, which plan addressed face covering/masks for students, staff, and visitors. And whereas the Board of Education has determined to modify the Sag Harbor Schools 2021/2022 District Reopening Plan with respect to face coverings/masks. Be it resolved effective March 2nd of 2022, all face covering/mask provisions contained within the Sag Harbor Schools 2021/2022 District Reopening Plan are modified to reflect that face covering/masks shall be optional to the extent permitted by law.
So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any discussion? No discussion. Mary, we will vote, we'll call a vote now.
Opened up the online voting.
I vote aye, Mary. I'm in front of a different computer, so I vote aye.
Okay.
Mary, I'm an aye also.
Thank you.
Mary, it's aye for me as well.
Ryan, what is your vote? I'm sorry.
It's all right. I was an aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Okay, the reopening plan is modified as previously read. That is the last item unless any board member wishes to bring anything up. If not, I will ask for a motion to close.
Brian?
Yes.
I did want to mention that we've been holding these meetings remotely, and we've moved to remote due to COVID. But considering that the mask mandate has been lifted, and there doesn't seem to be a compelling reason to remain remote, I'm going to put on the table, I'm going to suggest that we get back to in-person meetings.
Okay, we can ask, we'll go around and ask each member, and we'll go from there. I, I'm in agreement with that, Chris, so I have no, I think we should go back in person. I will go to Sandy.
Yes.
Okay. Alex?
I prefer remote. First, personal selfish reasons, I'd rather be in my house than the library. But I also think that, for the, you know, there's silver linings to all this. And I think we've seen a big increase in participation and accessibility for the public. And I know when we talked about this months ago, there was talk about a sort of hybrid formula. But I think it's very difficult to have a group of people in a room and then also have some people attending remotely. So I, I think that this is a better format, and I'd like to keep it.
Okay. Ryan?
Yeah, I prefer the in-person format. I think I've mentioned that before. I think it's just a little more productive when you have people in the same room rather than virtually.
Okay. And Jordana?
I'm somewhat indifferent. I think there's value to both. I think if we go in person, let's just continue having the ability for people to log in remotely to at least view the meetings. But we probably will want to talk about protocols for public input in those situations and so on and so forth.
Your goes.
I'm in person.
Okay. So it sounds like the will of the Board is to be in person, so we will be in person on our next meeting, which is March 7th. Obviously, subject to the remote options that are available pre-pandemic or otherwise if, for members or members of the Board or members of the community. Any other business for the Board before I ask for a motion to close? Nobody has anything? Okay.
Unless Jeff, any updates on any of the, for exact negotiations, but other than that, I'm good.
Okay.
I'll look back and know from Jeff from what I could see.
Is there, is there a motion to close?
So moved.
I did, I do see a hand raised. I don't know if, does the Board want to take a hand raised or we're outside of?
That's fine.
Okay, so Mr. Fisher, I just noticed that there is a hand raised, so we can call on that person before we vote or I ask for a second on the motion to close.
Second? Was I the first? I don't remember.
Oh, yeah.
Chris, you did the motion.
I guess I can't second my own motion, huh?
No.
Nope, we just had one more person that had their hand raised, so Mr. Fisher just let them in, so.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Hi, it's Brian Efrage. I just wanted to thank all of you for all of your incredible work. And I just want to really encourage the Board to consider a hybrid option for these Board meetings. I am one of those people that's been able to participate. I'm at work right now, and I work evenings. And I work evenings and obviously met all of us who are attending or most of us are parents who are also trying to feed our kids. And I think one thing that's really happened during this pandemic and remote access is an increased participation in the process. So I'm advocating for this in our local government as well and would really strongly urge the Board to allow not just viewing remotely, but participation by parents and, and community members in these future meetings.
We are looking into that to make that more accessible. I mean, we had over 100 people tonight at the meeting, which was great. So to whatever extent we can do it, we are looking into it and working toward that, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Okay, there was a motion to close. Any seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Sandy?
I said aye.
Okay, Alex?
Wow, so aye.
Aye.
And Ryan?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous.
We closed, everybody. Have a good evening.
Good night. Good night, guys.
Night.